So, welcome everybody. My name is Jules Tucker. I'm the co-chair of the Thunder Bay Health Coalition. And I'm here with with my co-chair Ed Arvelin. And Natalie Mara of the Ontario Health Coalition and Don Armstrong from the Ontario Nurse Association. And we're going to be talking to you about something that's happening here in the province of Ontario. Uh, I think most of we are, or most of us know what is happening. Uh, and it's pretty scary stuff. The privatization of our hospital services by this Ford government is a scary situation. And uh, it's it's happening everywhere. Uh, and it's it's pretty clear that there's not a lot of people that that are in favor of the privatization. But the Ford government doesn't seem to worry about that. Uh, so we're we're going to do all we can to try and stop this government from implementing their plan of of privatizing our our hospital services. And also the 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 further effort of privatizing, even further privatizing our long-term care and our our home care, which was basically almost all privatized now, and they continue, want to continue to privatize that. But but today, we're going to be talking mostly about the the plan to privatize our hospital services. And uh, to try and basically make us all have to pay for healthcare and basically wipe out the Medicare that we're so proud of. So Ed, I don't know if you want to have a little say hello to everybody and and then we'll turn it over to uh, to to Dawn. Ed, go ahead.
Jules, I think you've done a fantastic job, brother. I don't want to keep people too long and happily passing along.
Okay, thanks Ed. Well, I'll turn it over to to Don Armstrong, who is the 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 Vice President, I think, of the of the Ontario Nurse Association in Area One, which is a small area in Ontario, only from the Manitoba border to Sudbury. So we just talked before we let everybody in that it's it's only about a one-hour drive across the whole district, you know, like in Toronto, they always say, just scoot over to Sudbury for a quick meeting, will you? So it's it's quite amazing that that Dawn is able to cover this massive area of Ontario. So I'll turn it over to you, Dawn. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jules. Exactly. I have the S. Ball's membership, but I always remind my colleagues I have the biggest geography for sure with the most issues. Hello, everyone. Um, thank you for Jules and Ed for having me and of course, the Ontario Health Coalition for organizing this very important town hall and allowing me the opportunity to speak at it. My name is, as Jules said, Dawn Armstrong. I've been a proud registered nurse for thirty-three years, and I am the Ontario Nurses Association Region One Vice President. Oh, and I represent over sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across the province, including our eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm grateful to be here with you today and to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system now and why we know privatization is not the answer. At this point, anyone who's paying attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched to the point that now they are broken. We've been in crisis mode for almost three years now. It is unacceptable to call it a crisis anymore. It is our new reality. And I think we all know that this cannot be a reality we accept, not for our healthcare system, and definitely not for the individuals who are in it. We know from New Canadian Health Institute for Health Information Data that Ontario is the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs for one hundred thousand people. But Ontario, we just have, we have just six hundred and sixty-eight RNs for a hundred thousand people. That means just to be at the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire almost twenty-five thousand RNs immediately. And what does a nursing shortage of this magnitude look like, look like in practice? It has become commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for hours after their shift is supposed to end because the next shift is short-staffed and it's not possible to safely transfer patient care. Nurses are calling on to all floors to find out that where there should be ten to twelve RNs, there may be four to five. And of those that are there, there are likely nurses that are redeployed from other units as hospitals continue to use creative solutions like load leveling to fix their shortages. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions than there are RNs on staff. And Thunder Bay is no exception. I had the privilege of spending two days last week with my leaders from across Region One and in particular, the leader here in Thunder Bay. She worked through the previous nursing shortage and she said that the system failed so that the nurse was protected. Beds closed, surgeries canceled, all in the hope of maintaining a sustainable workforce. That is not the case now. The system is completely broken and is being done at the expense of the very people trying to protect it. She spoke of her members openly crying on shift because they are completely overwhelmed by their workloads. Nurses calling and quitting on the spot, refusing to even take their sick leaves, so disillusioned at being in the profession. The movement of nurses to find a unit or floor where they can find safe, safety is constant. And the increase in mental health and addictions is the elephant in the room no one wants to address. The strong leader of thirty-five years openly broke down in our meetings and there was not a draw from anyone. She coined a phrase that I will be using going forward, nurse abuse syndrome. We like to use fluffy terms like psychological injury, but what is happening to the nurses and healthcare professions in our current system is abuse. Which brings me to the next point. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We always put patient care first, and even in these extremely difficult times, our members find ways to provide the care that they know all patients need and deserve. But they're also human, and the cost of this burden is taking its toll, and the price is too high. Early retirements are going up. New grads are rethinking their careers and are leaving after only one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can assure they have a work-life balance. There is a very real cost for our healthcare system as the situation worsens. And now, the Ford government, of course, is using this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so much worse by introducing Bill One Two Four, which caps the wages of many nurses and healthcare professionals violating our charter rights. And Ford is working, refusing to work with us and the healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves in our world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare care workers are strong advocates for public, nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our current healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private healthcare will take away from public care by pulling resources and staff from the public system. As nurses, we have already seen this as colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. And we can't blame them, those nurses that make that choice. The agencies let nurses choose their own hours and can pay more because conveniently, they are not subject to Bill One Twenty Four. But there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. And this undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines our healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality of care, and it will hurt patients who can't afford to pay. We can't let this happen. Ontario's public healthcare system is not Doug Ford's Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations and belongs to all of us. That's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight and will continue to work hand-in-hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in our public healthcare system so that everyone gets the care they need and deserve. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plans in his tracks. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, very much, Dawn. It's wonderful. It's very clear that that this this is affecting so many nurses, so many areas in the healthcare system that that has to be stopped. Natalie, take it away. Natalie Mara, the Executive Director of the Ontario Health Coalition. Go ahead.
Thank you, Jules, and so nice to see everyone. Dawn, oh my goodness. You know, that's heartbreaking to hear about the moral injury, the abuse um, of the nurses and it applies also to the health professionals and the other staff working in our hospitals, our long-term care homes, community care, home care. Really, honestly, we have never seen um, it as bad as it is right now, you know, with no exaggeration whatsoever. And so I just wanted to tell you just very quickly, I think everyone knows, you probably saw um, the press conference where Doug Ford led with, you'll only ever pay with your OHIP card, you'll never pay with your credit card. And in which they, you know, that was the mid-January, so a few weeks ago, about a month ago now. And in which they announced their plan to move forward with um, bringing in brand-new, large-scale, for-profit clinics or hospitals in Ontario. The lead into that has actually extends back kind of quietly behind the scenes to twenty-twenty-one. At that point, you know, we started to get very concerned. The staffing crisis in long-term care was profound. The government was really doing very little about it, almost nothing about it, repeatedly holding press conferences, announcing thousands of new healthcare staff, but not actually doing anything to bring those staff in. Um, and really, despite, you know, repeatedly putting out lists of concrete things the government could do to attract staff, they just would not do any of those things. And then, as the hospital crisis became more profound as well, you know, we held press conferences and put out press releases and sent letters and put literally lists of concrete measures that the Ford government could take to address the staffing crisis in the hospitals. And, you know, just, you probably all heard the press conferences in which they announced, you know, repeatedly that they would bring in international graduates, um, which are a small number, you know, even if all of them were brought in, it's not a giant number of people. Certainly nowhere near commensurate to what we need. Dawn talked about twenty-five thousand RNs. We need about fifty-five thousand plus RNs, RPNs, PSWs, and health professionals, probably more than that. That's a conservative estimate. Um, so nowhere commensurate to the problem and just a lot of kind of PR to cover for really intransigence, like refusal to even lift the wage cap for the staff, the nurses, the health professionals, and other staff who literally have risked their lives through the pandemic for us and before in their regular work. Um, and and then also doing nothing about the workload, nothing to give them any kind of light at the end of the tunnel. You know, and then quietly behind the scenes, while they were also not spending the budget money that they had on healthcare. So in the last financial year, the last fiscal year, the province underspent its healthcare um, projected healthcare spending by eight bill, uh, by almost point eight, so almost a billion dollars. Um, uh, in that year alone, and you know, that compounds from the previous years of underspending. Um, and at the same time, you know, then declared that there was a crisis um, and that the only solution really was to privatize. Leading into the last provincial election, we warned, we held press conferences and public forums across the province. And we warned that the Ford government was planning to privatize the hospitals, was planning to bring in for-profit hospitals and clinics. And they categorically denied it. They sent out a ministry spokesperson after each of our press conferences, and they went around and they said outright, we are not um, expanding the private clinics and we will not be expanding private clinics and hospitals. That's what they said. At the same time, they had given an increase first in twenty-twenty-one of twenty-four million dollars to the private clinics. Then they put out a tender, so a bit, a bid for private clinics to provide eye surgeries. And they specifically said, the applicant does not need to be an ophthalmologist, i.e. a doctor. The applicant could be a corporation that operates a health facility that meets the criteria for submitting this application, i.e. a private clinic explicitly. While the government spokesperson is out there telling the local media that we're lying um, and that they are not uh, expanding um, the private hospitals and clinics. In fact, in the final quarter of the last fiscal year, that's the three months actually that led into the election. Um, uh, just before the election was called. They doubled the funding for the private clinics while they underspent the healthcare budget, refused to move um, uh, on the staffing issues in across the hospitals and so on. Um, and then, after, two months after the election, they announced that they were going to move forward with privatizing. It's the old, um, now, old formula, you know, underfunds, don't support, create chaos in the public system. And then hold out privatization as though it's the only option. Um, there is no question that the Ford government has been instrumental in driving our public health uh, hospital system and healthcare system into the ground. There's no question, leading into the pandemic, he cut funding for hospitals um, to below the rate of inflation. He's put a cap on wages for years now, refused to lift that cap even as staffing plummeted into crisis, refused to spend the money that we had allocated to spend uh, to support our public healthcare, um, and then declared a crisis and says that he's going to privatize. And it's not a small kind of eating around the edges. What they uh, have said is that they're moving forward, so the announcement uh, mid-January is that they're moving forward to significantly, in their words, expand privatization of surgeries and diagnostics in private clinics and hospitals. They're going to bring in new legislation to facilitate this plan, which is already underway. Um, the legislature resumes February the twenty-first, so we expect that legislation to be brought in, um, either that day or shortly thereafter. In the press scrum, the premier told the media that their assessment is that fifty percent of the current, the surgeries currently being done in po- public hospitals are easy, quote-unquote, and therefore of the ilk that they would like to privatize, fifty percent. You know, when you think about that, that would be, that would decimate um, the surgeries uh, left in the public hospitals and many of the public hospitals. The government has already called for bids um, for three new private-day hospitals to do fourteen thousand cataract surgeries initially. And then to grow from there as well as diagnostics. They're giving eighteen million in new funding on top of their earlier expansion of funding to exan- expand existing private clinics to cover care for quote-unquote thousands of patients. That announcement included more than forty-nine thousand hours of MRI and CT scans, four thousand eight hundred cataract surgeries on top of the other fourteen thousand, nine thousand other ophthalmic surgeries. So that's eye surgeries, a thousand gynecological surgeries, two thousand eight hundred and forty-five plastic surgeries, and so on. I'm giving you these numbers so you understand the scale of what we're talking about. They are expanding the number of private clinics, and they intend to further expand the volumes as well as the types of surgeries and um, and diagnostics that they privatize. They plan to have private hip and knee surgeries up and running by twenty-twenty-four. So that's the plan laid out there. Our assessment of this is that it is very serious indeed. You know, they waited till after the election, where in the first year of a new government, the plan is to move very quickly and get this in so that it's in, and of course, like the for-profit long-term care industry, hard, very hard, not impossible, but hard to get out once they have their foot uh, in any significant way in the door. Dawn went through sort of the major arguments against this. I mean, I'm just going to say like it would be bad for Southern Ontario. It's absolutely terrible for Northern Ontario. This is a model based on high-volume procedures. They take the easy, high volumes, right? The patients who are in and out where you can do it quickly, the profitable patients. They take them out of the public hospitals and the staff that go along with them. Those patients subsidize the heavier care patients in the public hospitals, by the way. So they take all of the sort of cream. They do those surgeries. They centralize them to large, high-volume centers. Okay, picture this in Northern Ontario. It's the antithesis of a local community hospital that provides a relatively comprehensive range of services. When we have looked for the private clinics across Canada, they almost exclusively locate in the largest cities of the country and within those cities in the highest uh, highest income neighborhoods. The reason is, we phoned every private clinic across the country twice and every private clinic across Ontario an additional two times, so four times in total. We've posed as patients, we've said, you know, we want to buy a hip surgery. Can we get it fast? How, how much we have to pay? And we caught the majority of them, not a small number, the majority of them selling access to healthcare for people who would pay literally astronomical prices. You know, for shoulder surgery in a private clinic, ten times the public health system cost. People are being charged twenty-three thousand dollars for hip surgery, fifty thousand dollars for day hip surgery. Ludicrous prices, two thousand dollars for um, cataract surgery, you know, which under the public system is the physician, the OHIP billing code is five hundred and fifty dollars, right? I mean, it's just, it's four times the cost. For-profit MRI clinics, they start generally at a thousand dollars. You want, you know, contrast, it adds money. Other, other body parts, it adds money. In the public system, when we ramp up MRIs in our public hospitals, it costs two hundred and eighty to three hundred and fifty dollars per scan on average. That's not the starting cost. That's the average cost um, for a public MRI scan. The prices are outrageous, and in addition to billing patients for the medically necessary surgery or diagnostic, they sell patients a whole bunch of add-ons. They tell people routinely that they have to buy um, an eye measurement test in order to get the cataract surgery, two hundred dollars. Is the normal price for that. That is completely medically unnecessary. OHIP covers the needed eye measurement test. The other eye measurement tests, according to the evidence of the expert panel that assesses these things, who are ophthalmologists who are specialists themselves, they don't add any efficacy. They don't show any added value. They are comparable to the OHIP covered test. So any physician that tells you, just telling you, don't, you know, you do not have to pay for that. And the OHIP covered test is not just, it's not like one is the Cadillac and the OHIP covered test is the crappy, poor second cousin. It shows medical efficacy. It is what you need to get that surgery. Routinely, they sell all kinds of extra lenses and all sorts of things attached to the surgery. Often, they'll tell patients that they have to get these things in order to get the medically necessary surgery. That is a lie. You are not allowed to force a patient to pay for something medically unnecessary to get a medically necessary surgery. Under the Canada Health Act, all medically necessary hospital and physician services, and that includes your diagnostic tests are covered. You are not allowed to bill a patient for that in Canada. You are not allowed to say, if you cross the border into another province, I can charge that patient for it despite a CBC report that said that last week. They are wrong. That is not allowed under the Canada Health Act. It's not allowed under Ontario law, but the private clinics routinely do it. It's their business model to bring in two-tier Medicare. They want to bill OHIP. They don't want to get rid of OHIP. They want OHIP. But they want to bill patients on top, and they charge what the market will bear. Um, and that would be the end of single-tier public Medicare in this country if we turn over a significant portion of our hospital services to these um, private clinics. So we have been struggling to figure out how can we stop this? And then Dawn talked about the other piece. Of course, they take the easy surgeries, the profitable ones. So they don't take patients who have diabetes or who have COPD or heart arrhythmias or who might code on the operating room table. They take, or who are overweight. They take the patients who are, you know, walk-in, walk-out, low-risk, et cetera, leaving behind everyone else to the public hospital system with less staff and less funding to provide the care for them. Um, and then in addition, there are serious quality issues in the private clinics. They don't have the governance of public hospitals. The quality committees, the public reporting, public access to information, they skimp on things in order to maximize their profits. And you know, there's a reason why the meta-analyses, these are huge studies, looking at studies covering millions of patients in thousands of hospitals in the United States find higher death rates in the for-profit hospitals compared to the not-for-profit and public hospitals because they skimp on staff. Well, they skimp on highly-trained staff. They skimp in the hemodialysis clinics on how much they clean the blood. They push patients through faster um, in order to get them out faster to make more profit. You know, this is the kind of practice that we're looking at. It's very similar to what we see in long-term care where they've privatized uh, long-term care. So we've been struggling to think about, well, what can we do that would actually stop this at this point in a government's term? And uh, years ago, we held a series of referendums. We called them plebiscites, which is like a citizen called referendum. We did them town by town, and this was to stop the P-three privatization. It's like a kind of giant step towards full privatization of the public hospitals. And um, in eight towns, we got about almost two hundred thousand, I think it was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand votes to stop the P-three privatization of their hospitals. What we did was we had town hall meetings. We got volunteers. We asked local stores like Tim Hortons and um, the local um, drugstore and busy corner stores and um, local grocery stores and so on. Could we have a voting station outside your store where people could vote to um, protect, to stop the privatization of the hospitals? Um, we held votes in unionized workplaces. The unions took ballot boxes into the workplace and held votes at shift change or sent the stewards around with ballot boxes through the workplaces to collect votes. In the non-union workplaces, like the nonprofits and local businesses, we asked the um, leaders of those organizations if we could hold votes in their um, businesses, and they agreed, and we did that. We did some, um, some, in some towns, people put the ballot in the local newspaper. Um, and then people could cut it out and mail in um, their ballot in order to vote. And through this, we were able to garner literally two hundred thousand votes in eight communities. And by the end of it, the government, which was a liberal government at the time, was phoning us and saying, listen, you know, we know you're never going to go to green light on this. But what's it going to take to get you from red light to orange light? You know, what's it going to take to get you to stop this? Um, and we were able, you know, in the, well, we said, stop the P-threes. What they did, they didn't stop the P-three privatization of the hospitals. But what they did do is roll back the privatization in the deals dramatically. So that, you know, in the first hospitals that were built as P-three models, all the services of the hospital, the porters, the food services, the transcription, you know, the patient records, all of that, all of it, except for the doctors and nurses were privatized and bundled into the thirty-year real estate deal. That was about four hundred, five hundred jobs per hospital. Um, in the new deals, it's like ten jobs or less. It's the HVAC and the shell maintenance. So they're still bad. The financing is too expensive. It takes billions away from patient care, all of that stuff. But we rolled back the scale of the projects dramatically. We did it again on a small scale when the liberals um, tried to bring in a regulation to privatize the surgeries and diagnostics. And again, we got several hundred thousand votes, and the government stopped. They stopped. They didn't do it. Um, and so we have been able to do that um, quite successfully. That was at a time when the media wasn't reporting that governments were doing these things. You know, it was really hard to even get a newspaper story. The P-threes were kind of abstract, hard to explain to people, confusing, et cetera. Um, you know, in this case, it is national news. Every level of news has told the public that the Ford government is now bringing in private clinics and for-profit um, uh, clinics and hospitals. There's no question. Everyone knows about it. So um, what we want to propose is that we would do a referendum across Ontario, across the whole province. A massive referendum. We would aim to get a million votes. We think we can do it. Right now, the Ontario Health Coalition represents somewhere between eight hundred, nine hundred thousand people, so almost a million people already. Um, but if we were to do it town by town across Ontario at the same time, there's no question in my mind, we could get a massive vote. There are fifteen million people in Ontario. A large petition in Ontario delivered to the legislature is about twenty thousand signatures. You know, getting a million, hundreds of thousands or a million people to do something on politics in Ontario is unheard of. It would shake any government of any political stripe. There's no question it would do that. And it would, we think, be enough to possibly stop them from privatizing the public hospitals in this province. And so we wanted to ask you, you know, would you consider joining in this? Would you help to build it? There's lots that we need to do between now and then. We're looking at the on-the-street votes, outside stores and so on for May the twenty-sixth, that's a Friday, the busy shopping evening, and the twenty-seventh, the Saturday. Um, workplace votes for the two weeks leading in, online voting for the two weeks leading in, votes in community colleges um, before they're terminated, community colleges and universities. So that would be end of March. Um, uh, and then, uh, so they would be advanced polls in those places. And then we would count the votes um, over the two weeks leading in, and then on the weekend of the big street votes. Um, and then announce the results. The legislature rises June the first. We would be in a position to announce the results May twenty-ninth or May thirtieth and bring them into um, the legislature for the maximum effect. And if it's okay, Jules, I just have a very short, it's like three-minute video just to show you what this looks like on the ground. This is a video that was done in Kingston. Um, and so we would have three months leading in to do public education and hold events and workshops and train people and all of that stuff, you know, generate media stories, explain to people what the issues are, and then hold the vote um, on um on the, at the end of May. But is it okay, Jules? I just want to show people what that would look like.
Sure.
Okay, and then I'll end and we can discuss.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I did a, I made a mistake. Sorry. I just have to change the settings. One second here. Let me try that again. Okay, here we go. So this was in Kingston, Ontario, and this was against the P-three privatization of their hospital a few years ago. Just a second here.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote that's actually citizen-run, not government-run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or private hospital.
Well, the drivers have extra ballots, so if they need more, like if they've run out in their trucks, then I will let them know you guys have some extra.
The phone's been nonstop. People are interested. Uh, they want to learn more. Um, they've been very supportive of the campaign. We've had very little people coming in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community-wide plebiscite, which is a community-wide vote, like a referendum, only it's organized by Citizens Group, by the Kingston Health Coalition um about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's going to be a public, not-for-profit hospital or whether it'll be built as a P-three, privatized P-three hospital with thirty-year-long contracts with a private, for-profit multinational consortium.
Uh, some people wonder how this affects healthcare. They say, well, the healthcare system remains public because nurses and doctors will be paid by the government. But the model of the P-three hospital is a, is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of the more conservative members of a council have tried to argue that uh we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because it's a provincial issue.
So we're very concerned in the city of Kingston about uh, well, about uh where are the, where is the money from our property taxpayers going? And uh it turns out that it's going to uh to fund a consortium that over time will make twelve percent uh on their invested money. So uh that twelve percent is part of that twelve percent is coming from our property taxpayers.
It's been really positive. It's actually really cool. People are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers out there on the ground uh doing this as well. Uh, it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity, everybody, even though they've been out there in the cold for an eight-hour day. They're they have no problem doing it. They're having fun and having a great time.
It's been very hectic, super hectic. Um, we had three volunteers here for most of the day, and we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee, and we're right here in Tim Hortons. So that just goes to tell you how busy we've been.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these chairs. It's been a great, great um, great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory. And you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening. It's now become a public issue, and it wasn't two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this healthcare policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of validating that whole discussion, all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're going to be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public healthcare system.
So that's what it looks like on the ground in communities when we do it. It's amazing, really. It's also fun to do. But by the end of it, everyone knows that this is happening, and it gives a way for the public to do something about it that just can't be ignored by a sitting government, and that's our goal. So I just end with this, you know, we have a lot to do. We're going to do these town hall meetings these two weeks. The legislature opens next week. They're going to bring in the new legislation. We're going to have to protest that. They have a majority, so they'll pass it. They're going to call it euphemistically something like the Community Health Facilities Act or something like that, but it's really the Private Private Hospitals and Clinics Act. Um, so we'll have to protest that. We need to create materials and then be ready to roll this out in colleges and universities next month in workplaces and across all of our communities over the two months following. Um, so we would want to hold sort of a series of public events, regional kind of planning and organizing meeting, some workshops and um, you know, educationals and things like that, training for people about how to talk with people about this, and so they're comfortable answering questions and so on. And then local organizing meetings in every community that we can, you know, even if they're small communities, if there's one or two people that could get a voting station that we could publicize, you know, therefore people could go somewhere to vote in their town, that would be amazing. And uh, and then you know, roll this out across Ontario and just make us a force, you know, find a way to make visible in a way that the for-government can't ignore that what we know is a massive public opposition to privatizing our hospitals and force them to put that support into our public hospitals uh instead. So that's the end for me, and I thought, could we open it for discussion? See what people think and have a bit of a discussion about it, and then um, you know, think about how we move forward in Thunder Bay and your region.
Sure. Anybody have any questions, any comments? You can go to the bottom of your screen to the reactions button and just click on Raise Your Hand. That brings you to the top of my screen. And that would make it a lot easier for me. Uh, Lee's, go ahead, and then Carlos. Go ahead, Lee's.
Okay, thank you so much, Natalie and Dawn. Um, I, I actually want to, I just want to raise some of the, the problems that, that I have that come, come to mind for me. Um, I, I try to think like a conservative strategist does, so once they get those things in place, even if we have a massive resistance to it, is it a fait accompli? Um, and, and then my question is, if, so let's say we do this just before the legislature closes for the summer, is there time for them to actually rescind the bill which we, we know they will pass? So that's part of my question. Um, and uh I think they are also going to use a strategy of trying to, to link this together with some kind of e-health program uh which we desperately need. Uh, this communication between branches of medicine that's not taking place right now, and people are definitely falling through the cracks and not getting care they need because that communication isn't there. So I suspect they will bundle them together, and then of course, we will be the bad guys for uh voting against a bill that has something that is important with something that is vile. Um, so I think, I hope I've expressed that clearly enough to, that you can actually answer. Thank you.
Should we hear from a few people and then come back? It's because some other people may have thoughts on what Lee says as well. Jules?
Sorry, what was that? Sorry, Lenny.
I was just saying, why don't we hear from the others with their hands up and then sort of come back? So, because others may have thoughts about what each other are saying as well.
All right, sounds like a plan. Carlos and then Evelina. Go ahead, Carlos.
Oh, thank you very much, Jules. My question is if the Health Coalition is going to coordinate action with the Ontario Federation of Labor Campaign, enough is enough in order to be effective.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Evelina, go ahead.
We're just going to do. Okay, um, I have two comments. Uh, as I mentioned at the Health Coalition meeting the other night, um, I had cataract surgery done uh fourteen years ago in our public hospital, and I paid, I think it was seventy-five dollars for the special lend. A friend of mine had cataracts, double cataract surgery done, I guess about a month ago in Toronto, and she didn't have the choice of whether to, to go to the hospital. She was told to go to a private clinic where she was charged six thousand dollars for two eyes. So my question is, do we have a choice to go to the hospital? Like, I had to have ultrasound, an ultrasound on my hand the other day, and you know, the doctor sent me a note, well, my nurse practitioner sent a note to the ultrasound place. They called me, I went, and then I thought afterwards, I've had ultrasounds at the hospital. Why didn't I go there? So that's, that's another question. Do I have a choice to say, thank you very much, I'd rather wait and get to the hospital? And the third thing I'd like to say is that I'm happy to help out in this campaign in whatever way an old retiree can.
Thanks, Evelina. Uh, it's interesting. It's a good question because uh both my wife and I went to the, the eye doctor today, and he recommended that we go for a cataract surgery, so uh, but he said it'd take at least a year before he gets, gets back the surgeon just to us, so uh, we'll, we'll see what happens. Uh, Lisa, you had a question? Then Max Kennedy? Go ahead, Lisa. No? Okay, Max, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's not something that's more proactive that we can do? Because as has been noted, once something is done, it is so difficult to get it undone. Um, we have examples where regulations or laws or whatever that Ford's passed have been deemed to be unconstitutional. But it takes years. We need to prevent this. I think we need to actually do something such as taking him to court and getting an injunction to stop this before it actually happens.
Thanks, Max. Uh, Maureen, go ahead.
Uh, hi, yeah. Uh, thanks for taking my question, Jules. Um, I'm, I'm concerned that I, I think that the plebiscite is important but not, not dangerous enough. I like, why aren't we talking general strike? Uh, I would be really in favor of working with the labor movement. I mean, this is bad for everybody. Anybody, we have to, we have to put, we have to put this as a, like a really big no. Don't go here. So that's my question. Why aren't we talking general strike in addition to this plebiscite?
Thanks, Maureen. Oh, Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I get confused from hearing some, like on Ontario today, there's uh it was uh last week, there were people talking about having to pay to go to um nurse practitioner clinics and also other, I mean, or else wait for two thousand and twenty-four to, to see somebody that was just, would be covered by OHIP. But so they, there is all these clinics that are actively collecting money from, from people. Um, like it's already there. It's almost, it seems like. So how can they get away with that if it's illegal?
Thanks, Sarah. Judith Monteferrari.
So maybe after Judith, Jules, I'm just trying to, maybe we can answer like some of these and then re-discuss again.
Okay. Go ahead, Judy. You're on mute. You're on mute, Judith.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, Natalie, yeah, you might uh, might be saying some of the same things, but uh I, I have to agree with Lee's because if they want to push this through, they will push it through way before uh May twenty-sixth. Like, the, the record is they pushed through the legislation in a couple of weeks, right? So especially if it's something that they're hot to trot about. So the timeline could be, you know, I really think that it's important that uh I love the idea and I like the concept of citizen voting. I think people are hungry for that input and but I have to agree with uh Sarah, this is happening all over the place. It's already, like, it's been creeping in, and it's like, I think Natalie was talking about that is the scale. And when it gets into the hospitals, that's a whole different scale. Like, I mean, but it is already out there. So it's, and it seems since the Ford government been getting, getting worse because now even the telehealth lines and that are referring people to private clinics that where they would have to pay for access to healthcare. So, you know, maybe it's the focus of what we are talking about to, like, not just the privatization of hospitals, but the whole idea that we need to roll back this uh, this movement towards increasing privatization across the system.
Okay, so I, I feel I'm sort of um, um bit bad. I, I don't think I did a very good job um describing, given this sort of mostly negative comments, but I'll try and respond to them. You know, honestly, we're trying to figure out what we can do. We, um, the truth is, they are moving forward with expanding the private clinics as we speak. Um, however, the new hospital, the three new hospitals are not slated to be built until um, like maybe next fall or something like that. So um, yes, it's moving forward. Yes, they will pass a piece of legislation, but there's no question we can stop them from implementing, and we can stop them in whatever way we can from expanding the scope of the privatization by mass citizen movement. For the issue of, you know, what are our other options? I mean, you tell me if you've got a better idea. I'd love to hear it. But um, you know, I have done, we've done this now for twenty years. We know that we've been effective in doing this because we've done it twice before and twice before with much smaller scale and much less media and publicity. We were able to actually stop governments from moving forward. It is possible to stop the Ford government. I think the defeatism that people feel in the face of the Ford government is one of our worst enemies. People somehow think they're, they're, you know, different than other governments. They're not. You know, we faced down the Harris government when they tried to privatize um the diagnostics and they tried to bring in private cancer treatments. We rolled it back and we stopped it. You know, we stopped the Liberals from doing it. We will stop the Ford government from doing it. But we need a way to make the mass public opposition visible. And you know, we did call protests at Queens Park in December, and they were small. They were like a few hundred people. We called them in various towns, and they were small. Um, you know, people, you know, need to be mobilized to come in massive numbers. For that, we need ma- kind of massive public education and a kind of way to get the first phase of public involvement off the ground and persuade local people to volunteer and to help organize in large numbers to help so that we can reach the, you know, masses of people um uh more effectively. That's, you know, so we have to provide the tools and the ways to do that. Yes, they will. Objectively, they will try to move ahead. Objectively, they are not going to have the first three hospitals off the ground before May twenty-sixth, not even anywhere close um to that. And as I say, the expansion then into other diagnostics and hips and knees is supposed to take place over next year and into twenty twenty-four. The timelines are set the way they are to do it as fast as we could, but also pull it off in a massive kind of way. Um, and so that's why they are, figure if ever, most organizations have monthly meetings. If we have all the materials ready and the call-out ready for the beginning of March, it goes out, people have their first discussions, then in April they're implementing. In May, they actually need to be having workplace votes uh on the ground voting, et cetera. We need to get the voting stations. We need to print up what those are. We need to insert them in local leaflets. We need to get those leaflets out door-to-door and in every possible community group, every faith organization, et cetera, et cetera. That all takes, you know, a good month of on-the-ground um moving. I need to um get the money. I need to raise the money to do it. We need to be able to pay for the printing and all of the things. So uh, you know, that is all going to take three months. That's the fastest we could possibly do it and do it on kind of a large scale. For the concrete questions about payment and so on, you know, this is a problem. Like, I found for ultrasounds also. Went to one in a private clinic and um, um, it was, it was like really poor quality and actually got a misdiagnosis from it, all kinds of problems as a result. I asked my surgeons, you know, why, like, if the, if the quality is so poor, you know, should I be worrying about going to another private clinic with poor quality? And she said, yes, she only actually trusted for, this is in the city of Toronto, like the GTA, for clinics to um, to have decent quality. I said, well, do I have to go to a private clinic at all? Can't I just go to the hospital ultrasound? She said, yes. So yes, you can ask to do that. There's no question. But I'm not saying patients who are waiting for a long time and need a treatment or diagnostic. But I'm not saying patients who are waiting for a long time and need a treatment or diagnostic, you know, have to do that at all. What we want to do is force the government to fund and support the hospitals to run their operating rooms that are closed. And I know you know that, but, but so, yes, you can. And yes, they're still doing cataract surgeries in most public hospitals as well. So, yes, that's an option. Can we take them to court to stop this? Well, you know, Max, we did, you know, I would love to. And I would love to say we have a bulletproof case that can do this. They have a majority government. They can pass laws to do what they want. Is the unfortunate answer to that. Moreover, there's really nothing that stops them from doing this. You know, in the existing legislation, we have a Private Clinics Act. It's called the Independent Health Facilities Act. They can do it even without new legislation. I'm curious to see what they put in the new legislation. But, but unfortunately, it was kind of passed as a go around. We have a Private Hospitals Act that bars, bans any new private hospitals after nineteen seventy-three. And there really are only two left. But the Independent Health Facilities Act was passed as a go around to allow private clinics. It's in law. It has not been expanded, not, while the Harris government tried, as I said, we fought it off. The liberals tried and we fought it off. It hasn't been expanded because we fought it off. But there is no law we can use to stop them from actually doing this, unfortunately. Once, if they actually succeed and bring in the private clinics and patients are being charged, you know, en masse, then we can bring a writ of mandamus, which is a legal mechanism to force them to stop the clinics from extra billing. That has happened in Quebec. It lasts for a few years and then it creeps back in again and we'll have to do it over and over again. But that's after we've already lost the ownership of the public hospitals, not before. Why aren't we talking general strike? Well, we're not the labor movement. We can't call a general strike. That is to say, you know, I too would love to see something definitive that would absolutely stop them. And, you know, I understand that the labor leaders in Ontario are taking this extremely seriously. All of them are supportive of the referendum. All of them are working it through their organizations. The Ontario Federation of Labor is coordinating and will, is supportive of this plan as well, as well as all the major community groups, the major seniors groups, the major patient advocacy groups, the major public interest groups that are, you know, are Ontario wide. So, you know, we can help to create the context in which the citizenry, including workers, are mobilized and might consider general strike action or could be moved to that sort of thing through methods like this. But, you know, at the, at the moment, they are doing work within the unions, but it's, you know, not there yet. And I, you know, you have to talk with the labor movement about that. And finally, I guess I just want to say, like, honestly, we're open. If anyone has an idea that would work to stop this, we're so open to hearing it, you know, we'll do it. If we, anything we can do, we'll do. But this, I don't have a better idea. This is the idea that we have and we'll do everything we can to make it the most effective. I hope that you'll support it, but I would like to hear if people have something different that would work.
Oops, unmute, unmute. Thanks, Natalie. Great stuff. I, I will just, I'll just let Dawn has a question. Ed and George. So go ahead, Dawn.
No, actually, I, Jules, I have a comment around the general strike. As Natalie said, that is a labor movement thing. And as, as a leader in the labor movement, there is nothing that my fifty thousand, or sixty-eight thousand, about fifty thousand are in the hospitals. And there is nothing that they would like better than to walk out of the hospital and do a general strike. Unfortunately, we cannot. Again, there are laws out there that prohibit, prohibit us from doing that. And yes, we understand that QP took to the streets. We all took the streets with them and, and had an illegal strike. The difference between us and QP is that we are registered staff. So we are held to a higher standard and we are held to a college. So whether Doug Ford and his government would forgive us and our employers would forgive us, our colleges would not. And so there is honestly, there is nothing more that we would like to do than to have a general strike and walk out and shut down our hospitals. But at the end of the day, that is just something that we cannot do at the moment.
Okay, Ed, go ahead.
Well, thanks. I'm gonna jump in off and I've been with Dawn and said, my name is Ed Arvlin. I'm a registered practicalist by trade. The regional vice president for OPSU Sepfo here in the Northwest Ontario. And within OPSU represent roughly, I believe it's around forty or fifty thousand members in healthcare and a hundred and eighty thousand members across the province. Been doing a RPN for about twenty-five years, so twenty-five years already. Right, wow, time flies when you're having fun. But I've seen it, worked in private, worked in public. I'm bantering with somebody on Facebook right now about private versus profit and what people need to get is, it doesn't cost, it's not cheaper, right? You're not going to jump the queue. Only so many lanes you can get into. And, and a big thing I think I, we really need to do and we need to focus on is creating our own narrative. All too often, we, you hear the politicians at the top, you know, Ford is driving those three letter words or those three words all the time. Boom, 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 just jamming it down our throats. And by us creating a narrative and following what the Ontario Health Coalition is doing, private nonprofit, right? Or private not, you know, that is the key. We need to have the real stories. We need to have everybody here talking around the table saying, okay, this is what happened. This is what's occurred. This is how it's going to happen. We need to have people posting on social media. We need to have people posting, you know, wherever they can to change that topic because all too often Ford has the media with the TV and does. But we can change at the supper tables. We can change when we talk to our friends, go for coffee and whatnot. That's going to be the, the key in mobilizing. And, and why I know Jules and I have worked with the Health Police and I see so many familiar faces. We need your support because without everybody here, we, we can only do so much, but we need your support to continue this action, you know? We talked about going into the malls and, and setting up tables and information said, we've done different fairs. We've done different activities. But we need to continue to support and grow, not just in Thunder Bay, but across the Northwest. So please reach out and we'll do it. We can. As for the general strike, I'll be the first one on a line if I can. And Dawn said it perfectly. Unfortunately, the nurses and many of the professions within the hospital are regulated. And we can't, or else we don't hold our license anymore. I mean, these are jobs. But that's not to say that we can't do job actions and we won't, and we will. And we will do it on our time off. I know we're burnt, we're tired, you know, we're beaten up, we're everything. But, you know, this is what we do. We advocate and this is what we will continue to do. Know that there is conversations occurring with the, the major healthcare unions in the Northwest. And we are planning meetings about different actions and different, different things that will be occurring around the Thunder Bay area currently. So we will share that with you to show and tell you what we're happening and, and, and supporting our healthcare professionals and our people that are working on the front lines. So thanks for your time and thanks for attending.
Thanks, Ed. Go ahead, George, and then Max.
Okay, thanks, Jules, Ed and Natalie. My, my thought or question is, how do we inspire the youth? Younger people who are now entering the workforce as PSWs, as RPMs, as nurses. They're the ones that are just starting this work. My, I, I have no idea, but if we capture those folks, I think it's a huge thing because they are the future. So how do we inspire? How do we get them involved?
Thanks, George. Carlos, no, sorry, Max and then Carlos. Oh, no, Janet, I think you had your hand up. I don't know if you want to, don't want to get into, but I'll put you in after Max. Go ahead, Max.
Given the recent announcements for the transfer of monies from the federal government to the provinces, I'm just wondering if in conjunction, we can't say pressure the federal government to basically tell the provinces, every dollar that goes to private healthcare is a dollar that we do not transfer to you.
Thanks, Mac. Okay, Carlos.
Oh, thank you very much, Joel. I think it's important to keep in mind that when we are talking about a general strike, it's required an enormous amount of work and it's going to require a great deal of preparation to get to that point. I see the Ontario Federation of Labor and the major unions in Ontario are working very hard in order to ensure that we are going to make Mr. Ford accountable and the plan in office, in office, leading to a day of action in June. In nineteen ninety-seven, the teacher of Ontario went into a ten days of political action stoppage. And we were on the street and support staff were on the street supporting the issues that were important on the day. Privatization and charter schooling that Mr. Harriet was trying to introduce. But it took months and months of preparation to get to the point where the member were willing to take ten days or even fifteen, it was possible, to ensure that the government was listening to us. What we need to do is to work hard with our union and with the Ontario Federation of Labor in conjunction with the Ontario Health Coalition to get to that point where the public, where the, our own members are ready to take a step. We don't have to call it general strike. It could be a day of action. But it's actually a work stoppage to show the politician at Queen's Park, the right winners, Doc Ford and his cronies, that we are serious and we are not going to keep stopping the pressure on them and we are going to keep their foot to the fire. It could be none, but we need to work very hard and we need to be devoted to the cause.
Thanks, Carlos. Janet, right? Did you have something to say? You're unmuted. There you go.
Yeah, I'm unmuted, I'm unmuted now. There was just a couple of issues that I was thinking about as we were going through and talking about, you know, a campaign and getting the interest. And I'm going to echo a lot of what Georgia said is that we do need to attract the younger ones. Here I am, I'm an older one. I was an activist. I started being an activist when I was very young. Well, we don't seem to be cultivating young activists anymore. And if I, that's been my experience. And it was my experience before I retired from the union as well. So we need, we need to find a way to get them interested. Now what? I don't know what you have planned in a social media campaign. And I know social media campaigns have to be careful and, and some, and at times can cost a lot of money, but they can also be very cheap. If you can find like three clear examples or causes, something that'll generate interest, that'll get everybody interested from young to old and key points that you can back. You, 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 you can, you can support those points. You can prove them. Get them out there and just have individuals flopping them out there on, on Instagram, on Facebook and out in social media because others will then pick up on it. And they'll move on it and, and they'll feel informed it. And, but they have to be points that are that are, that are going to hit at the core of the problem and that are, and, and that if we do happen to make a statement about the cost, the money, the whatever, you know, because when Natalie's talking, there's some fairly outrageous stuff that is happening. And so they have to be irrefutable. And that way we will succeed, but it has to be something that will pique an interest. And, and we don't want to flood them with a thousand different things, but I think if we had three different themes that brought the, the whole thing home, we could make it work. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Janet. I have Janet Patterson and then we have a Dawson Mihaychuk, who is a young person who wants to speak. So Janet, Natalie, I'll, I'll let you speak after Dawson. Go ahead, Janet.
Thanks, Jules. I, I'm not young, but I did want to say that we attended a rally for the environment that was set up by young or high schoolers and they did a magnificent job. And I really think it's about finding things that make a difference to them. Now, my brother-in-law had to have heart surgery in Texas a year ago, just over a year ago now. And it cost one point five million dollars. So you want to talk about what we know the American side that they don't have, you know, that they have, they have the haves who have the money to go do it and the don't haves where you get sent to chase hospitals until you can find one that you can go to. And we don't want to get into the, that kind of healthcare system. And you look at, I mean, that, that could very easily transfer over to here. And it can be a family member. It could be a child. Healthcare is random. It doesn't, we don't pick it. It picks us. There are certain, not healthcare, but health issues. And, you know, it, it's paramount to everybody. So I really think that there is a way to make a campaign for healthcare for everybody regardless of ages. You know, we, I, I know lots of sick little kiddies and, and with that comes siblings and that comes parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and everything. So I really think that's, that's, it's a very important thing that we have to draw attention to. But the other thing that I wanted to also say just is that I, I think the idea of like, we have to do something to make it public. Cause I, I know I talked to quite a few people about this meeting tonight. And, you know, they care, but they don't come out at all. So it, it has to be something that I, I look forward to learning more about how you do this referendum and how to get it out there. Because with universities, you know, universities are going to be heading out within the next month. And the colleges are right afterwards that. And so the rollout's going to have to be really super timely that to, so that we can hit everything. But I, I welcome, I look forward to being a part of it to help as I can.
Thanks, Janet. Dawson, go ahead. Give us the answers.
Oh goodness. Well, I am an actual honest to God young person, allegedly. You know, I was really inspired a couple, about a month or so ago when we were out at the youth climate strike protest in front of Patty Hidu's office here in Thunder Bay. And that kind of showed me that, you know, young people really do care. And I think, I think that, you know, when people say young people, they often think, oh, you know, eighteen, twenty-five year olds, you know, people like me. But I, I think we can be even more ambitious. I think like folks like those high schoolers, they care about something like climate change so passionately. I'm sure that you find that they support something like protecting our public healthcare system. We all have American friends. I have an American friend right now who won't go get her broken finger checked out because she can't afford it. And like, that's the road we're going down. And I think that we really need to show people what the real stakes are. Because right now I notice the government, one of the things that the government is doing that really it's at a position of power is that it obfuscates things into really technical complex terms. Oh, you'll be going to, to, to a, a private health facility that will accept your OHIP card and da, 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 da. And, and I think like, we need to keep it as simple as possible. Like, if we do not push back now, like, we already are at a point where our healthcare system has degraded so much over just ten years. Imagine where we're going to be ten years from now. Maybe that's something that the Ontario Health Coalition might consider, like, imagine just a brutal ad of Ontario in twenty years when we have an American style healthcare system. But it's kind of rambly, but I thought that since we're talking about young people, I might as well pitch in.
Thanks, Dawson. Lee's, I can let, let Natalie ask if she could answer some of the comments that were made. So I'll wait for you. Okay, I'll put you on the list. Go ahead.
It's okay if, if Lee's wants to go ahead and then, because I really want to sort of see if, if there is any interest in moving ahead at all or what's going on.
All right, go ahead, Lee's.
Okay, so, so I, I do want to say definitely I, I think we should move ahead with the plan that you're proposing. I just wanted to say in terms of communication, the Ford government is also working very hard to change the channel. So right now it's all about the feds and, and that money. In addition to that, it's all about mining and creating new jobs and trades and so on. And so you will see at least as much improvement, if not more publicity going into those things so that the health thing kind of gets sidelined. And so I just put that out as, as a caution or a note to all of us. And so I just put that out as, as a caution or a note to all of us that we, we have to keep coming back and refocusing on this because they will try to distract from it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee's. Okay, Natalie, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's true. So, um, so the, just a few very quick answers. Sarah, I missed you in my last round. So Sarah mentioned nurse practitioner clinics where they're charging patients. Yeah, it's a problem, but I mean, the issue there is a bit different. Nurse practitioners don't have the ability to bill O-HIP and they should. Actually, they should just give them funding like for nurse practitioner-led clinics. Because we're not, as you know, fee-for-service is not the best model, but the bottom line is they're not, they don't have a way to practice. So even though all these people can't get family docs, there are nurse practitioners out there that could provide care for them. But they can't because the government has not provided a way to pay them to do it. And so now they're left running private clinics, charging patients. Most of them don't want to do that. But they have no other option. So like we'll push for, you know, in the kind of list of things that could be done to improve things, that is definitely one of them. As for the comment that, you know, people are already paying in private clinics, that is our point, right? Where they exist. And really there's only a small number of them across Ontario, mostly cataract surgery clinics. Other than like your X-ray ultrasound and so on, which were privatized, you know, decades ago. These clinics are extra-billing patients. They are violating the Canada Health Act. It is not the case that you can go in with your O-HIP card and not have to bring your credit card. It is already eroding the fundamental principle that healthcare be provided based on need. And as I said, the prices are outrageous. And in provinces where they've allowed them in to provide a range of surgeries and so on, Alberta, B.C., Saskatchewan, Manitoba, we're seeing just ludicrous prices, flagrant violations of the Canada Health Act. Patients being told they literally have to pay in Canada fifty thousand dollars for hip replacement surgery. Like it is, it's completely unacceptable. And so the privatization of the hospitals is the end of single-tier public Medicare. There's no question in my mind and there's no one in the country probably that has followed the private clinics more closely or researched them than, than I have and then we have. And so if we don't stop this, I don't know how we protect single-tier Medicare. That is the urgency. I agree. We should make a quick short video of it and get it out on social media, also all kinds of memes. Just a quick other question, federal transfer, yes. You know, we should push the federal government for strings attached to the federal monies for sure, but not at this point at the, you know, because it's hard. You can't run a big campaign with many, many targets. It's just too confusing to people. We need to pressure Ford right now. We need to stop the Ford government. And yes, we should also pressure the federal government, but in the meantime, we need to stop this transfer of the ownership and control over our hospitals from the public hospitals to the private for-profit sector. A lot of people talked about the general strike, so I think that's okay. We can put that aside and that needs to be raised within the Federation of Labor and Union sector. So my question for you is this. I would, like across Ontario, we've had fulsome support. People were actually really excited about the idea of holding a referendum of going to people. I think everyone knows it's kind of hard to get people to come to us in public forums and things like that. You know, a number a hundred or a couple hundred will per town, but not like the thousands that we need to actually change things. So this takes it out to the people in a way that is really visible. Me, I'm like so excited about, I think it's going to be fun and really powerful. I hope that you are as well, but I, I don't have any sense of this meeting. It's kind of unusual. And so I just, I'm trying to get a sense. Can people, can you go down to the reactions? It should be along the bottom of your screen. Can you raise your hand if you're in support of helping to build the referendum in Thunder Bay? And, and area. Okay. Okay, so there's a lot of support there. Okay, so I think, thank you. Phew, I was starting to be like, oh no, what, what are we gonna do? Okay, well, that is very helpful. Thank you very much for that. Then what can you do? So are there people who are willing to volunteer to help make this happen? There's something everyone can do. It's quite simple. Like, do you know someone that owns a store? Do you have a store that you go into super frequently? You know, could you, not right now, but when we're ready, could you ask them if they would host a voting station? You know, if we got lawn signs, for example, would you help put up lawn signs? You know, would you help by putting leaflets out in your neighborhood if we got a leaflet that could go door to door everywhere or in your community group or in your church or faith organization or in your union? If you're in a union, would you help hold a vote in your, on your campus for the youth? If anyone is here from a community college or a university or faculty, would you help hold a vote on campus? You know, those sorts of things. Can you put in the chat? If you look at the bottom of your screen, there's a thing that says chat. Can you put in the chat if you're willing to volunteer to do any of those things? Or any other range of things? So leafleting people, helping to organize a public meeting, a in-person public meeting to get volunteers together. Helping to put up lawn signs or identify places to do it, helping to find stores that would be good voting stations. The other thing is we need boxes, ballot boxes. So every LCBO has empty boxes. They're like the perfect size, like, you know, the kind that would have, what is that, like two first, like wine bottles in them? So we need, we're going to need several hundred of those. So anyone who drops by the LCBO, will you ask for boxes and start collecting them in your garage or whatever? We're going to need ballot boxes and we're going to need signs. And so I mean, there's something that everyone could do with, and we're not asking you to do everything, just within, you know, the range of things that you're comfortable with and willing to do. Okay? And then very quickly, I just want to before, well, I'm not sure how to do this. I want to show you a quick video because you're talking about social media kinds of tools. Can we just, it's like one minute, literally. This is the most recent one that we put out. It's on Ford and the status quo. But we can do another one like you're talking about, about people being charged for their healthcare and, you know, in the private clinics and how that's illegal. But Shala, can we can just quickly show that to people? So they have a sense. Doug Ford says the status quo is not working. Doug Ford was a large part of creating the status quo. Leading into the pandemic, Doug Ford cut hospital funding to below the rate of inflation, even after years of hospital downsizing.
We keep pouring billions and billions of dollars into healthcare. It's not a money issue. We have to do things differently. They can't be going into a hospital and waiting forever.
By the time the pandemic began, Ontario had the fewest hospital beds left of any province in Canada. We have the lowest hospital funding of any province in this country. Doug Ford has chosen to direct funding to private for-profit clinics, even though our local public hospitals have operating rooms that are closed because they don't have the funding to run them. And now they don't have the staff to run them. We have built our local public hospital system. Don't let Doug Ford destroy it by privatizing it. So I think that's what you mean, right? Like videos like that, short, to the point with some basic information in them. So that's the latest one. It's up on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook. We send it out by email. We can send it out again. And anywhere else? Am I missing? Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, Reddit? So it's up all over the place. And we can do more like that for sure. And if people have ideas, please put them in the chat or tell us because we'd be happy to do it. So I'm really thrilled and I see that all kinds of people are saying that you want to volunteer. So the next step is this. The pledge is going to reconvene February the twenty-first. Then they're going to bring in this act. Don't worry about the fact, we just have to message to our full membership. You know, we're going to fight it. We're not going to make it easy for them, but it doesn't mean we've lost when they pass the act. They still have to actually do it, right? And so we're going to, we're going to build the fight back through that. By March, we would like to have all the materials ready, the ballot, a pledge to only vote once form, the, the leaflet that can go door to door and everywhere. And sort of all of the main materials, videos, et cetera, for the full campaign. We would like to be holding like a large regional organizing meeting by the end of March. Beginning of April, in-person meetings in every town that we can. So like it would be Kakabecko Falls, you know, Thunder Bay, the towns along the North Shore of Lake Superior where the, where, where we've got a contact or a few contacts, you know, et cetera. Trying to reach Dryden if we can, out to Knorr if we can, et cetera. And then, so that's beginning of April. And from there we would deliver the materials, lawn signs, ballots, ballot boxes, et cetera, and work through with people in a in-person meeting, how to roll it out on the ground. By the end of April, we need the voting stations. We need to be photocopying and cutting them to put in the leaflets and we need to be doing mass leafleting. So that by the time, you know, May comes, we'll have lawn signs up. We'll have where, where there isn't snow. I mean, who knows? It's such a weird winter. But the, the leaflet will have the date of the referendum. We'll have a public launch sometime in April with a press conference announcing which towns are joining in with the dates of the referendum and we'll be on the ground ready rolling it out. So the next steps locally would be one big regional Zoom meeting for the Northwest to try and like just talk about organizing and get it sort of find key people and find, get it off the ground. And then beginning of April, in-person meetings in every community that we can get it going. So we could get, you know, at least a small vote in every small town and larger votes in the large cities. So that would be the plan. I hope that's clear and I'll just, there's a bunch of questions and then I think we're good.
Okay, thanks Natalie. Yep, it's pretty clear. I have Suzanne, Leslie Reed, Judith and Carlos. Suzanne, go ahead.
Hi, I just a couple of things. So I was just thinking, you know, looking at, maybe we need to look at the high schools too because kids in the high school need volunteer hours. This would be a good way to, you know, to reach the ro, that age group as far as getting them to come out and leaflet. I know that we did this years ago when they were trying to close down Heath Pool. We did a whole bunch of leafleting and we got the young kids to, to go, you know, door to door to drop off those leaflets. So that maybe you know, something that we could look at as well. I just want to mention quickly too, like Ed had mentioned earlier about the, the healthcare unions up here have already been meeting and talking. And so there is a rally that's coming up on February twenty-fourth. It's going to be outside St. Joe's Hospital. So all the unions are taking part. We're going to meet at Lee's office first at eleven fifteen and then walk down to St. Joe's. Those who can't walk down can meet us there at eleven thirty. Natalie is coming down to speak there as well. Lisa's going to be speaking as well as, you know, the heads of some of the, the other unions. So it's really important and maybe this is the start that we can have, getting people out and getting commitment and and getting people really involved and making them aware of what's happening in our healthcare system in regards to privatization. Bill one twenty-four and, you know, Doug Ford's appealing of, of the, the, the court ruling on that. So you know, I know that I sent some posters to Jules and, and he's sent them out as well. We've got, we've been sending them everywhere. So hopefully we'll see a really good turnout there and it'll be a start of, of fighting back and against privatization. Thanks.
Thanks Suzanne. Leslie, go ahead and then Judith and Carlos. Go ahead, Leslie. You're up, you're on mute.
I just wanted to make the comment of how serious the situation really is here in Thunder Bay. Because when you stop and think about it, seventy-six point six percent of the population is now seniors. That leaves twenty-four point four percent of the younger generations look after us. And they want us to stay in our homes. Well, how does, how does that work out? That means that the care that you get isn't the care that you need. And not only that, to stay in your home, you need the help of home and community care. But the hospitals are hiring the PSWs and the nursing students to work in the hospital to help with the need that they have for staffing. So, you know, that, that leaves, you're caught in a catch twenty-two phase is what I'm saying. We've got a big problem here. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Leslie. I have Judith and then Carlos. Go ahead, Judith.
I just want to ask Natalie about the funding piece because obviously leaflets and, you know, lawn signs are, are expensive, I, as, as an ex-politician knows. So I'm just wondering, what's a way we can contribute and who are we asking for money? Like, how are we getting funds together?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so for all three of those, how to contribute. Okay, so Suzanne, I'm, I'm looking forward to coming up there. So I'll look for, I'll see everyone who's there at that event. And maybe if I'll just check in with you, maybe we could bring some clipboards and sign up people to volunteer to help with the referendum when we're there.
That's an idea.
That would be good. Then Leslie, yeah, like what you're saying, I, I didn't know about those numbers locally. They're pretty staggering. But, but for sure, you know, in doing this, we will continue to fight for home and community care and for long-term care and, you know, and really push the fight back on those issues as well. And I agree with you. I mean, it's extremely, extremely serious, you know? And then last but not least, Judith, just going to share my screen, okay, for a second. Because there's a couple of things. So people who want to donate can donate here. So this is our website. This is what it looks like, the main page, just ontariohealthcoalition.ca. And so you can click on donate there and donate. You can also become a Medicare defender. So we're, at the moment, we're at almost four thousand. Actually, we have another two thousand something to import. But so we're asking people to sign up because we're trying to get, you know, up into the thousands of people who are signed up to be a Medicare defender, to help to protect public Medicare. And so that's here. If you have like a retirees group or a seniors group that you're part of, if you click on the place where it says here for more information, you'll find first the leaflet is there, but that will change the one for, for the referendum. There's some fact sheets and things. And here's a survey about what people are being charged in private clinics. So you can fill it online or you can print it and mail it in. So those are some concrete things that everyone can do right away. When it comes to the actual, you know, on-the-ground campaign, it costs us about six dollars per lawn sign. So I think what we would do is just ask people if they could, if they would be willing to donate five dollars to help cover the cost. Those are, that's a big cost. And then in general, we'll put out some asks for people to donate. And honestly, every time we do media, every time I'm kind of on the big, like the big national news or what have you, we get in a slew of donations and things. So that it's coming in. Thank you to the generosity of people, but there's no question, we got to build a very significant pool of money to be able to pull this off. So in any way that people can help, it's most appreciated. Okay, so, and oh, Sally, Sally's here. Can you win? He's our, our administrative director. And he's amazing. So anyway, he just put the link for the website in the chat. And Jules and Ed, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your local, for your leadership all these years, Jules. And Ed, thanks for joining and helping with this to lead the local coalition. I know that in Thunder Bay, we can pull this off. I mean, I know it's the kind of community where we can really do a big and good job. And I, like, if you look at that list of volunteers in the chat, it's amazing. So thank you all very, very much for all of the positive, like all of the questions and the, you know, queries and thinking it through and all of the feedback, but also for being willing to sort of put your shoulder to the, to the metal. Is that the right? I suck at idioms. I suck at idioms. Like, I always get them wrong. But anyways, uh, and really, you know, push together to really push back in a very significant way on this. Um, Jules, can I just finish with one thing?
Uh, I guess so.
Okay. In Alberta, when they brought in the private clinics, do you remember Ralph Klein? He was like the Mike Harris of Alberta, right? So the Ralph Klein government, they imploded the Calgary hospital. They literally blew it up. You can look it up. It's online. You can see the video. And it was their big, kind of like they did that on purpose because it was like the revolution is here and la, la, la. And they were gonna privatize and they brought in the for-profit M R I and C T clinics. And patients were being charged, you know, hundreds or a thousand dollars or what have you for their M R I and their C T. Our sister organization in Alberta is called the Alberta Friends of Medicare. And they collected patients' um, bills and receipts. All of those people like Evelina, your friend, who paid six thousand for their cataract surgery, who by the way, I need to speak with, if at all possible, urgently, um, you know, collected their stories, collected their bills and receipts, made a major complaint to the federal government for Alberta violating the Canada Health Act, made complaints to the Alberta government. And um, they brought in a bill, like they're gonna bring in in Ontario to bring in the private clinics. It was bill eighteen or sixteen or something. And they held this protest and Shirley Douglas used to talk about it. She said it like, they were at the legislature and you could see across the flat part of Alberta where cars lined up to come into the legislature. They filled the galleries. People were hanging from the banisters in the gallery of the legislature. And ultimately Ralph Klein was forced to pay back all the patients who'd paid for their M R Is and C Ts in the private clinics. He stopped um, the private clinics by, by ramping up capacity in the public hospitals and publicized the M R Is and C Ts in Alberta under the Ralph Klein government. And in the end, he said, um, public healthcare is the electric third rail of Canadian politics, you know? In the railway, there's the rails that the car goes along and then there's the third rail that carries the electricity and you dare not touch it or you get electrocuted. And I always loved that. I was like, you know, they electrified the third rail. That's the title, by the way, of the book I'm writing about the fight to protect public health. And that's what we need to do. We need to electrify the third rail. Make them afraid to take away our public healthcare. And that's what we're trying to do. So thank you so much. We're gonna save that chat. So we have all your comments and feedback. So before the end of the meeting, please put them in and we will listen to everything we can and do everything we can with you. Thank you.
Thanks Natalie. Thanks Natalie. Uh, great presentation. Thanks everybody for joining. Don't go away yet. Um, I just want to, I just want to add a couple of comments. Uh, people have said, you know, can we do it in other areas? Uh, the N D P is having an A G M and thankful we'll put our table up there if uh, if we're not, we're not affiliated with any union, with any party. So if anybody else, uh, if the Conservatives have a table, have a uh, an A G M and they want to invite us, we'll go to that one and the Liberals also, and the Greens also. Uh, we're gonna be having a table at the market a couple of times between now and uh, and, and the, and the referendum. Uh, of course, the fifty-five plus has a health fair on March the twenty-fifth. We're gonna have a table there. So you can join us there. Uh, and wherever else we can, uh, we can be, we will be there to, uh, to uh, inform the public and uh, let everybody know what, what's going on. And uh, and, and of course, as Natalie said, uh, you know, we, we gotta get the materials printed it, uh, printed and everything else. So for the universities, they're gonna be finished in the March. So uh, we'll have that material here. Uh, so we can go to the universities and the college and the university and the college and uh, and get the, uh, get the young people to uh, to sign up for the referendum there. So uh, uh, there'll be actions happening. Uh, and of course, uh, we have our, our uh, Thunder Bay Health Coalition meeting. The next one is coming up on, on March the fifteenth. So I invite everybody to, to join it and we'll, uh, we'll send out a notice for that and a link for that uh, later on uh, in, in, in March. Uh, so uh, certainly hope everybody can, can join us. I see a lot of people that volunteered. So we're gonna be in touch with a lot, a lot of people and uh, we're gonna make this work. Uh, I know there Natalie, we're working on some health coalitions in the Northeast. And hopefully we can have, uh, have a town hall in Sudbury, North Bay. I think you're, you're planning on uh, setting up something out that way and also in Susanne Marie. So uh, uh, there'll be people and opportunities for the people in the Northeast that are on today's meeting to, uh, to, uh, to uh, join a, a town hall out there. So uh, I, I saw Lisa had your hand up and Janet. So maybe I'll just let you guys have some quick comments, please, because we're already into over an hour and a half. So make it quick. Go ahead, Lisa and then Janet.
Okay, when can we be public about the, this, the actual referendum?
Natalie.
You can be public now, but if you don't mind, like, obviously, we're not gonna organize in secret or anything, but let's hold sort of the launch with the media. Like, let's uh, you know, the dates and all that sort of stuff. I mean, obviously in organizing meetings, talk away about it, but um, let's do a media launch all together with every town across the province, sort of um, in April. Uh, and announce you're joining in with the dates and all that.
In the meantime, we can, uh, we can whisper to people. Everybody, whisper to everybody. Okay, Janet, go ahead.
Hi, okay, my, my quick question is just with this referendum, do they have to sign them in person?
Well, we're, we were gonna have online votes. Like, you mean proxies or something? I don't think we want to.
No, 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 I've just, just so there, there is online votes too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where those QR code would be handy.
Totally.
Yeah. Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Janet. Okay, uh, what is the A M P A? I don't know. What is the A M P A? Who had that?
It's the Teachers Annual General Meeting, no? The O S S here?
I can respond to that. Yes. I'm a meeting of the Provincial Assembly of the Ontario Federation of Secondary Teachers.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. We'll try and get somebody there. That's what we gotta do. We've gotta go to all these places and talk to people and let them know what's going on. But again, I think a lot of people know what's going on, but they just seem silent. They don't understand that, that it's almost, they've almost given up themselves saying, what can we do? Well, we're telling you what you can do. Join us and we can put this, put this to an end and, and, and make this thing turn around.
Before we go, Jules, can I ask for a quick show of hands?
Okay.
Like, it would be great if we could get ballot, if we get, get ballot boxes into schools. We're just trying to figure out. So this is, I'm not committing to anything. But just the question is, first, if you can raise your hand, just don't do it yet till I tell you the question. Raise your hand if you think the voting age should be sixteen and up. Or do you think the voting age should be eighteen and up? Okay, so first, if you think it should be sixteen and up, can you raise your hand? Okay, can you lower them? Okay. Now, if you think it should be eighteen and up, can you raise your hand? Okay. Okay, I'm trying to figure, so I'm consulting. Can't commit to anything, but thank you for the feedback. Okay.
Okay, uh, thanks. I, I, I think, Dawn, if you want to add some final words, go ahead.
I know, just uh, the energy in this room is, is something to see and, and I'm so, you know, glad that there's such an active chapter in Thunder Bay and hopefully it spreads out and I'm uh, in Dryden, I will be willing to help and do anything I can for this campaign for sure. So put me on the list.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Dawn. I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm back from my union days as a, as a staff rep with Q P. I have contacts, a few contacts left in, in Canora. Uh, Jerry Laba was on air. Jerry's still here. He used to be the Q P rep in Canora. I have friends in Koken and Fort Frances. So uh, hopefully we can get some, uh, some ballot boxes out there over the next uh, few months also. So uh, it'll be a Northwestern Ontario vote for sure.
And Natalie, I saw one of, on your video there from Kingston, one of your, one of the former ops who's now one of ours in Thunder Bay. So I'll be tapping on, I'll be tapping on Chris Cormier's shoulder too. I'll be like, apparently this is your passion. So I will be tapping on his shoulder as well.
I'll help in every way I can, Jules. It's Judy Bane from Canora. I'll help in any way.
Thanks a lot, Judy. I'll be calling. Okay, everybody. Thank you very much. Great meeting, a great town hall. Enthusiasm was fantastic. You've, you've uh, you've built me up again. I love these things. You feel down going in and you say, oh, hell, I can't get out of this yet. I gotta keep going now. So thanks, everybody for, for, for joining us and we'll be in touch with everybody and everybody's friends and relatives. Thanks a lot, everybody for joining us. Good night. Take care.
Good night. Sally, can you save the chat?